Okay, sorry for the delay, a little electronic technicality. We will stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. May we bow in an attitude of prayer? Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, to serve others. Lord, lead, guide, and direct each one of us as we deliberate, contemplate, and ultimately make decisions here today that affect every citizen of our wonderful county and communities. Lead, guide, and direct us, I pray in thy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have two meetings. I'll ask for a motion and a second on the first minutes of August the 8th.
Motion to approve August 8th minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, ready to vote. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Three, I was absent for that meeting. Okay, the second list of minutes is for August the 14th, 2023, motion?
Motion to approve August 14th.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, 4-0. Okay, commissioners' reports and comments. Vice President Klein, you want to go first today?
Sure, I gladly do. Good morning, everyone. I attended an event by the Clear Spring Historical Society yesterday at Plum Grove Mansion. The Hancock Civil War String Band played, it was quite a tribute to the Civil War and the music. They were, that was an awesome experience. If you ever get a chance to go up to Plum Grove, please go visit. And if you ever get a chance to listen to the Hancock Civil War String Band, I'd strongly urge you to do. You'll enjoy it immensely. I also attended August Toberfest down at the Ag Center. It was, well, on Saturday, it was well-attended, the weather was beautiful, a great setting. Jill Colbert and her crew of Army of Volunteers did an excellent job. And also last week, I attended the Pittsburgh Institute of Aeronautics. We noted PIA as their, one of their graduation ceremony. And I believe all, there was 10 or 11 of them all had jobs, leaving PIA, our strong prospect. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, good morning. Also attended PIA, that's a wonderful program out there at the airport. Had 11 graduates. And they had some additions to the, to the, to the classroom, which they had a new King Air 350, which is a twin-turbo prop plane, they got military surplus. They flew it in, so it's flyable, so that's going to be a huge asset to their training. And they had an engine off of, I don't know the name, it's off an MD-80, like a passenger. That's going to also be another huge training. And it's like Jeff said, had Piedmont Airlines there, Omni Airlines there. And those kids had multiple offers, and everybody has a good job, you know, anywhere from starting at, what I'm understanding, from some of them there, 50,000 to 80,000 a year, starting. But they have to relocate generally, but, you know, it's not too far usually. Even though I think last class, someone went to Hawaii, so, whatever. Also, well, I saw we have some representatives are going to speak from the Women's Commission. I'm the commissioner on that. I had our last meeting at the Women's Club, and they can fill you in on that if they're going to do that. But that's, I learned a lot at the Women's Club. I didn't realize what they all did there. Actually, a shame on me, but I didn't, that they do a lot down there that I didn't realize. And I learned a lot at that meeting. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, President Barron, good morning, everyone. Like Jeff, I enjoyed the August Toberfest and the great turnout. My family enjoyed it, and wonderful volunteers, good food, good beer, good music. So it was a lot of fun. Other business, Fire Association Monthly Meeting, you know, continue to work through issues there on standards and EMS. And Jeff accompanied me there, and a great group of volunteers working hard for public safety in our county. I also went to the Board of Elections meeting where they were addressing the upcoming elections planning process. And they're planning on having a public hearing next month to go through some of their planning elements for the next election. And they're going to be making a decision about where the early voting site will be, besides Virginia Avenue. Last election, it was at the library downtown. And they're looking at that site as well as others. Last election, the library site downtown had a lot of complaints about it and really did not have much participation at all. And the fact that it is so near the main Virginia Avenue early voting site makes me wonder why we would basically co-locate two so closely together when we have such a large county. And I think the goal should be to draw in as many people and give as many people as possible an opportunity to get to the early voting site. So I hope that when they have that public hearing and they neck it down to their options, that they will be considering places outside of the downtown area, Morgansville, Boonsborough, Williamsport, Clear Springs, someplace else where you can get more people and make it easier for people to participate in our voting process. I keep an eye out for that, it'll be a public hearing, and it's always important for people to express their views. And I would just make note that today, we're going to have a public hearing very shortly about convenience stores. And we probably have a number of people here who are going to be speaking to. I'm eager to learn a little bit more about it. I have a lot of questions, so I'm looking for clarity, better understanding of what the implications are. The obvious ones, but also the second and third order consequences, because I'm always concerned about opening the door to things that we don't anticipate. And then we get down the road and we will have a situation that we don't like at all. So I'd like to understand, you know, if we're going to allow 6,000 square foot convenience stores, and you're going to allow parking of three and a half trucks for each 500 square feet of the convenience store, that would allow truck parking, long-haul truck parking for 42 long-haul trucks? Now, maybe I'm wrong about my calculations there, but I'd like to be disabused of that. You know, they say that the average convenience store is between 4,000 and 6,000 square feet nowadays. So I'd like to understand, you know, what our goals are and our objectives are from a development perspective, and how this ties into our comprehensive plan for what we want our county to look like. Do we need to expand truck parking outside of highway interchange areas? Is a question that I'd like to have answered, and why, and what the data is that supports that? Or am I wrong, and it is not going to go beyond the highway interchange area? What's the implications for the rural business districts? Is there data to show that there's a demand for truck parking outside of the interstate highway interchange areas? Where are, where are all of our convenience stores anyway? And what's the option for those convenience stores that already exist to expand significantly? And what would those implications be? And would truck parking be allowed at those locations then, too? You could say that there might be natural limits to that, but I'm not sure. Because if you have sufficient income or investors or the desire, anything is possible. So what are the unintended consequences? You know, that's what I'm interested in hearing about, not just the intended consequences of the hearing today. So I'm looking for clarity, I haven't prejudged anything. But I have a lot of questions about that issue. And this is not, in my view, about the Williamsport truck parking, truck stop issue. That has been in the news so much, because I think this is much more expansive and impacts areas across the county. So maybe I'm wrong on that, but I'd like to be, you know, informed better so I can understand it. And with that, Mr. President, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. I have a number of things. Good morning, everyone. And first, I'd like to start out by thanking my fellow commissioners. The last two weeks, you've covered a lot of bases, a lot of openings and opportunities in our community. A number of us, spent all of last week in Ocean City at the annual Maryland Association of Counties Summer Convention. And no, I did not see the beach, I did not touch the sand. As a past president of Mako, I do have to brag a little bit, I got my badge up here. I think I got the award for the most ribbons.
Wave it.
Commissioner Wagner wanted me to wear it. I think he wants to slip over here and pull it up and choke me with it, so, without emotion.
I'll second that.
They're too eager, they're too eager. So, but in all seriousness, it was a record turnout. The most participants, both elected officials, county or state governor's office and his cabinet, and many of his staff, the exhibitors from around the state and other areas, were, it was phenomenal. And I have to brag a little bit, between our PR department and our business development folks, they hit it out of the park. Washington County had, I know I have a biased opinion, but absolutely had the best booths, the best food, the best handouts. I couldn't even get into our booth at times because people were lined up waiting to see what Washington County has to offer.
Well, John, I think that's part of your leadership, okay? You prepared everyone quite well, so.
It didn't hurt to have locally brewed beer there.
Well, we had, we did have some locally brewed beer, but we also had pies that were made right here in Washington County with fruit that was grown here in Washington County. The governor, we personally delivered three pies to the governor. He was ecstatic, so the place, it was a hit this year. And I'd just like to, and forgive me if I missed someone's name, but Danielle Weaver and her staff, Danielle is not here in the room this morning, but Danielle, Linda, Michelle, Carmen, Alex, Jonathan, and Michelle Gordon worked the booths, talked to folks, greeted folks. It was an incredible week, and Washington County did shine at the summer convention, and I can't say that enough. So thanks to everyone, a lot of effort to put that together. So the networking was phenomenal. And again, Governor Moore and Lieutenant Governor Miller were there three days, walking, talking, and greeting folks. He gave, Governor gave a very inspiring speech on Saturday morning. It's not what everyone wanted to hear, but he did put a message out that spending needs to be brought in check, and it's not a revenue issue, it's more of a spending issue. So the governor very eloquently made that very, very clear. So also had the opportunity, and I know Calvin Ball, Howard County Executive, who is the current president of Mako, will be here with us next Tuesday. But we did have opportunity to meet with Calvin and introduce him to some Washington County folks. And so I think it'd be rather enjoyable next Tuesday when Mako makes their annual visit here to us. Couple other things I have. One is, many of you know, I like to share, I had a little quote in the bulletin on Sunday. And this week's little quote was, "A mistake which makes you humble is much better than an achievement that makes you arrogant." So just, we all might benefit by keeping that in mind. As far as looking ahead, upcoming events, like I say, Mako representatives will be here next Tuesday with us. We have a comprehensive plan 2040 meeting in Hancock next Wednesday, August the 23rd, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall. We have the upcoming grand opening of the Penny Mart at 208 Salem Avenue on Thursday, the 24th. And a reminder, friendly reminder, that there's an evening commissioners' meeting in Keysville next Tuesday, the 29th.
John, that Hancock meeting's tomorrow evening. If I'm not mistaken, the comprehensive plan, yeah?
Okay, can I say next week?
You did say the 23rd, but you said next Wednesday.
Okay, I apologize, it is tomorrow night, the 23rd, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, August 23rd, is the first comprehensive meeting out in the communities. Another thing I have is I have some flyers for Beaver Creek Community Open House. A number of venues in the Beaver Creek community, once again this year, will just have a open house weekend. And you can move from venue to venue, there's food, there's other things that are happening in the area. So with that, I think, any other comments?
I just have staff comments.
I'm sorry?
I just have staff comments.
Okay, so with that, we'll move right into staff comments.
I did attend the Greater Hagerstown Committee Administrators Meeting last week. GHC is planning an Investors Roundtable Program for September the 14th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Maryland Theater. They've planned to provide a detailed update on the stadium project, business incentives, tourism, and other projects in the area. The commissioners should be receiving an invitation for the event, if you haven't already. As Commissioner Barr mentioned, I did attend the Mako Summer Conference. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to attend the summer conference last week. I attended the conference along with Commission President Barr, employees from Business Development, Public Relations, Roads, and Stormwater Management, and staff really did a remarkable job setting up the county's booth and fielding comments and questions from visitors. While there, I met with state officials regarding several issues in Washington County. The first meeting was with the Department of Housing and Community Development officials. They are planning a tour of the community on November the 1st. That all-day tour is being organized by the county clerk, Dawn Marcus, and will include numerous elected official stakeholders from each incorporated town, as well as representatives from several local agencies. State officials have provided us with a list of projects and sites that they would like to visit in Washington County, and the itinerary is currently being drafted. The second meeting was with the Maryland State Department of Transportation officials regarding county transportation priorities. I thanked them on behalf of the board for funding $100 million for the second phase of the Interstate 81 widening project. I also let them know that Interstate 81 and Interstate 70 continue to be priorities for county residents and businesses. I emphasized the need for $10 million in funding for the design of the final phase of the Interstate 81 widening project and continued funding of Interstate 70 interchange funding improvements. We also discussed funding for the ramp-up of county transit and funding needs related to clean energy initiatives. With the state's adoption of the Clean Car Rule and full implementation required by 2035, we discussed the need for transit vehicle replacements and a sustainable revenue source for, to replace highway user revenue, to ensure that users are paying for the cost of highway road and maintenance. The state recognizes that this is a priority. And I'd like to thank President Barr, Andrew Eschelman, who is our Director of Public Works, Jim Kirchvile, and Dan Spedden for attending that meeting with me as well. I attended several other sessions related to the Rural County Coalition, county administration, and budget and finance while at the conference. The board will have some tough issues to face in the coming years, especially related to clean energy environmental initiatives. Those issues have been, have an undetermined impact on county financials and will require major changes to vehicles and equipment, transit, vehicle and building infrastructure, solid waste management, and recycling of household waste. Those issues will have an impact on local businesses and residents in the form of state-mandated recycling and extended producer responsibilities for product packaging. Other sessions that I attended included, that also touched on the upcoming legislation from the federal government regarding the implementation of the family and medical leave insurance for county employees. In certain circumstances, that does extend FMLA leave from 12 to 24 weeks at reduced wages for employees. The last two topics that were discussed in multiple sessions are topics that we are experiencing here. Discussions revolved around the challenges being faced regarding staffing shortages, implementation of, and funding for fire and EMS, as well as blueprint or the Kerwin initiatives for public schools. It was a great opportunity for me to meet my peers from other Maryland counties face-to-face. Lastly, I just want to echo what Mr. Commissioner Barr said. Mako officials will be on-site next week to present those legislative issues to county residents in person. And that's everything that I have.
Thank you. Any other staff comments this morning? I have the next item. In response to a number of weeks of applications and interviews to almost exhaustion, we didn't, we have in fact interviewed for county administrator or a permanent position. And I will say for the record, in all due respect, not my first choice, but I'm committed as president in serving this community to move forward in a collaborative fashion and work hand-in-hand with what I'm about ready to propose. I worked firsthand last week. We had, as she has so elegantly listed, the meetings, the appointments, the interviews at Mako, did a phenomenal job, and so thank you. With that, I'd like to recommend that Michelle Gordon be appointed as the county administrator effective August the 19th, 2023, at a grade level 22, Step 22, with an annual salary of $195,541.
Commissioner, President Barr, I'll make that motion to approve. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, ready to vote?
I'd like to make a comment, if I could.
John, I thought the interview process went very well. We had a number of very good candidates with exceptional knowledge and experience in a wide range of areas, a number of them were from outside our area, that may have been able to contribute in ways that would have been positive. Michelle Gordon has demonstrated through her career an exceptional capability to manage financial efforts. And having observed her over the last months, nine months that I've been here, I've been deeply impressed by her skills, her ability to juggle many things, her executive decision-making capabilities, her responsiveness, and her ability to make simple things work well, which is something that we were having some challenges with in the past. So I commend you for this. I, I think we've made a smart decision. I look forward to working with her and the rest of the staff.
I'd also like to echo the same comments. You've demonstrated the ability to handle this job. The comments from your performance at Mako is exemplary. And also proud to vote for the first female county administrator in history of Washington County. So congratulations, as we're about to take this vote.
And John, Dave said so much, I don't have anything else to say, so I'm good.
Ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign?
Congratulations to you.
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to serve as the interim county administrator during the last couple of months. I really learned a lot, and I really also appreciate the opportunity to serve as the county administrator going forward. I'm really looking forward to the challenges that this position will have, looking forward to serving the community and serving the commissioners as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next up is citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment about an issue or issues of county practices and interests. This is not an interactive dialogue or a question-and-answer session. It is solely time to hear citizens' comments. Please limit your remarks to three minutes or less, and please state your name and address for the record.
And Mr. President Barr, if they have comments directed at the, for the public hearing, should they save those for later?
Yes, please. Yes. So if you're here to participate in the public hearing, please hold those for that, for that time. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Good morning, commissioners. It's good to see you all today. I'm Carol M. Allen, President of the Washington County Teachers Association, representing our teachers, 1,400 teachers, in our office here on Oak Ridge Drive. Yesterday, I wanted to just bring to your attention that WCTS, WCPS teachers reported for their first official day of the 23-24 academic year. And schools will start on Monday, August 28th, for all of our students. We have, this certainly includes our 1,400 members of WCTA, as well as our 10-month paraprofessionals and other support personnel. By the way, we do still have openings in all of our ranks, so if you know someone who would be interested, please send them our way. I'm here today to extend an invitation to each of you to visit our schools this September and October. You don't need to wait for the annual observance of American Education Week in November to stop in. Our teachers, administrators, and support personnel would welcome the opportunity to share with you the many challenges and successes of our daily work. We need your financial support to operate, of course, but we also need for you to understand how our schools have changed in the last 40 years to meet the needs of our changing demographics and families, as well as the changes in technology and society that have occurred since the 1970s. American Education Week this year will be celebrated November 13th through the 17th, but it is my hope that each of you will schedule at least one visit between now and then. I can arrange a time for you to tour one or more of our schools, meet with our teachers, one-on-one or in small groups, volunteer in one of our classrooms, or talk with students. We would be happy to have you hear directly from us about the challenges and promises of the blueprint for Maryland's future and how its implementation is underway in Washington County. November's American Education Week presents all Americans with the opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. You have that opportunity every week of the school year. We look forward to having you walk our halls with us to see for yourselves the work we do each and every day of the school year so that you can more fully understand how your funding of the Board of Education's annual budget, annual budget requests directly affects all of the employees of WCPS, as well as thousands of students and their families each and every day. Thank you, and I hope to hear from you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your service to the community. My name is Stephanie Phillips, you have my address on file. What is the greatest challenge of Hagerstown? When this question was asked to me five-plus years ago, my answer was, "I'm not from here, I'll get back to you." My first thought was, "There are too many free, affordable, fun, informative activities at the same time listed in the What's Next Guide, what a great problem." I asked a lot of community members, businesses, silver sovereigns, and elders. Some of the common answers were, "Not enough living wage jobs, affordable housing, drug problems, labor shortages, infrastructure needs, dry county, not enough water to support further development." Nowadays, it's a universal question, survive versus thrive. Tourism is vital, visitors bring new residents and businesses, increasing tax base to improve the community and its services. My answer is, "You did a great job during COVID. I have great confidence in your leadership, I mean that sincerely." Our regional infrastructure, especially the northern dams, need attention. I may have ancestral relationships that could help, especially in Pittsburgh that ends in DC. That's priority one. That's priority one. Priority two is anything heading in the direction of the Port of Baltimore. Please join Mission Bay, help lead the Coalition of DC Montgomery Frederick and Berkeley and Associated Counties in PA, and proactively inspect, secure, and mitigate these facilities before they become unmanageable natural disasters. While in elementary school, my mother gave me a desk and a typewriter, and she said, learn how to type this. Now is the time for every good man to come to the aid of their country. Sidebar, my type is my husband, the project manager. Newly revised to present day, now is the time for all citizens at age-appropriate levels to come to the aid of their country. You know, my sister and the American Red Cross taught me, it's not the situation, it is how we all respond to it. My Black Ball Creations t-shirt art therapy suggests a slogan especially for our little people. In emergency, in an emergency, we are not scared because our community and our country are prepared. I present this on behalf of my family, the Phillips family. Please let us know if and how we can help serve you. If you can help me with relocation to this area, I would appreciate it, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope.
Good morning. I am Dawn Nally, Two Young Avenue, Greensboro, Maryland. We are with the Washington County Commission for Women. I am a tenured nursing professor at Hagerstown Community College, teaching medical surgical nursing, and I was recently chosen as Faculty of the Year at Hagerstown Community College. My healthcare journey has encompassed geriatrics to mental health and a little bit of everything in between. I grew up and around Williamsport, Maryland. I have volunteered with many local organizations like Brook's House, Girls, Inc., Brook Lane, the American Red Cross, Alzheimer's Association, and was appointed by Governor Hogan to the Potomac Center Citizen Advisory Board, and most recently was appointed by this committee to the Washington County Commission on Aging. It has always been a passion of mine to champion girls, young and adult women, to become the very best selves they can be, and to understand that they should be independent and global thinkers when it comes to relationships, employment, and self-reliance. I care very deeply about the mental health needs of women in our community, affordable safe living conditions, and affordable daycare for single parents. This month, Commissioner Wagner joined us for a tour of the Women's Club on South Potomac Street, excuse me, South Prospect Street. For 100 years, the Women's Club has provided safe, low-cost housing to single women. The building has been carefully maintained and renovated through membership and its foundation. The Women's Commission is looking forward to meeting with other community partners throughout the remainder of 2023 to access the status of women in Washington County, and will continue to attend these monthly meetings to provide you updates. We appreciate your time today and your support.
Good morning. I'm Lori Krasnowski, 10820 Archer Lane, Williamsport, Maryland. I'm one of the owners of the Stonehouse Urban Winery, a commissioner with the Women's, the Washington County Women's Commission, an active member of the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, a recent graduate of Leadership Washington County Class 36, Secretary Treasurer for the BNI Elite Alliance Masters, Treasurer for the Discovery Station Board. My background is over 25 years in the legal paralegal profession, as a domestic violence and abuse advocate, and in a volunteer role. I have relocated to Washington County following my role at, with the Stonehouse Urban Winery. I thank you for your time today and for all that you all do for Washington County. I'm dedicated to our community, and as a member of the Washington County Commission for Women, working to build a community that will lift others up, develop urban renewal, and create opportunity and awareness of the needs of developing youth and women. Members of the Commission are looking forward to joining you all at City Park on September 12th for the remembrance in Park, Remembrance in the Park Memorial Ceremony. Also, on October 21st, I'll be one of the dancers with Dances with the Arc Stars, and on October 13th, one of the celebrity waiters supporting hospice of Washington County. Thank you for giving us time to introduce ourselves and provide a short update on the Commission for Women.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' participation this morning? Last chance.
Can you just check if Mr. Arnold with the Disabled Veterans is here? I think he's supposed to speak this morning.
Is there a Mr. Arnold with the American Veterans Association here this morning?
Okay. Thank you.
We had him on our schedule to speak this morning. Okay, with that then, we'll move right into our public hearing, application for zoning text amendment, RZ 23-001, and Jill Baker will make the opening comments. Do we need to officially call that to a public hearing?
Yeah, well, there's, there should be a statement for you to read.
Right here? Sorry, Jill. Was it? Do I read all of this, or just part of it?
Yeah. You can go ahead and read it.
Down, the whole thing, or just?
Yeah. Read to that.
Here, down in the back. Okay. Sorry, I need to get clarification here. Next on the agenda is a public hearing concerning RZ 23-001, a proposed text amendment to Articles 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 22, and 28A of the zoning ordinance for Washington County, Maryland. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners may then discuss the issue and take any action that they deem appropriate, including adoption or rejection of the proposal, or they may take the issue under advisement and deliberate at a later date. So, good morning, Ms. Baker. Would you please introduce the matter? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barr. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated, I'm here to present to you a proposed text amendment that's being put forth by the Planning Commission regarding convenience stores. Right now, the definition of convenience stores is within our ordinance, however, we don't have a clear identifier of where they are permitted specifically within our commercial districts within the zoning ordinance. After some conversations being held recently regarding truck traffic and warehouse issues and truck stops in the area, the Planning Commission had decided to take up these issues sort of one at a time to deal with some of these issues that are, that are being brought up. Within your packet, you will find a staff report regarding this issue. Within that staff report are included the proposed text amendments. Just as a quick overview, what we're proposing to do is to, first of all, change the definition of a convenience store to try to make it a little bit more clear, take out some restrictions in terms of overall size of the convenience store, especially the section that's talking about including the square footage of the canopy for the gas pumps. Also included within this amendment is the discussion of truck parking. There's been some confusion about whether or not trucks can park at convenience stores, yes, no, maybe so. And again, that goes to the definition of, of the convenience store and what we allow there. So, the significant portions that are being amended and/or added to this ordinance at this time, or being proposed to be added at this time, again, include the definition and some truck parking requirements for the convenience stores. Planning Commission had a public input meeting to take public comment on this issue on April 3rd. At, on the June 5th meeting, they took action to recommend approval of these proposed text amendments, as they've been presented to you. I will note that there are several letters of opposition from the general public, basically concerned about truck parking within the convenience store areas. That's all I have at this point in time. I'm happy to, oh, we've got to open it up for public testimony.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. We will now open the hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to testify, and we'll start out by the, by Rose, please come forward, give, give us your name and address, and tell us what you'd like us to know. So, at this time, I'd like to open it up to anyone on the front row, first row.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, Ron.
My name is Ron Braais, R-A-I-S, 15740, Falling Waters Road, Williamsport, Maryland. And I'm here in, like Commissioner Derrick over here, with a lot of questions. My wife and I have been advocates for a safe intersection, and I know this is not specifically for that intersection of 63 and 68 there in Williamsport, but the overall implications of this text change is going to impact that significantly. And Rose and I started in November of 1970, yeah, 1997, working on getting a safe intersection there, and we were instrumental in getting the board's approval and ultimately the state's approval to put a left-hand, westbound, left-hand turn lane in there, and significant changes to the stoplight. It's, our prime interest is the safety of that particular area, and any interchange with the interstate that's going to potentially have a convenience store, quote-unquote, truck stop, that's going to generate a lot more traffic. And our, our main point is to preserve the safety of this particular intersection, and thus comment on these proposed changes. And as I look through, and I want to ask a question of Jill Baker, are we talking about the May 1st changes that I think you put out? Yes. Is that, is that the paper we're working from? Not the March of May? First?
That's correct. Anyone see this revision?
Yeah, well, the other one was also, but, okay. In this revision, one of the revisions in it is the truck parking facility may not be permitted in association with a convenience store in a rural business district. Now, there's no other comment in here or section that defines rural business district. We have a residential urban, urban district, we have a business local district, but there's nothing here that says rural business district, so I'm a little bit concerned as to what that is. And then, the Article 28A, it mentions there, chain or branded restaurants shall be considered a separate use from the convenience store, and I wanted to know whether there's, is their parking permitted with a chain or branded restaurant at one of these locations where there's a convenience store? Nothing says so. The other thing that I think that maybe would be apropos for y'all to consider is to have a statement in here, which is not here, that requires anybody wanting to put a convenience store at one of these interstate interchanges to come before y'all to get a special exemption. It seems to me that that was in the zoning ordinance before, but with the changes, it looks like it's been taken out. So I think we need to keep that in there. And then I do have, just for y'all's information, I have, if you don't mind, a handout that I'll give each one of you that expresses somewhat a little bit better. Basically, this is a paper I prepared back in 2017, just for some of y'all's, did you have enough of them? Any leftover? No, I, well, I want the leftovers back. That I prepared in 2017, that when we were talking about this even then, for those of you that are not familiar with this, we've been going around on this situation probably since about early 2000. Now, Rose and I started in 97 when we got the left turn lane there, but there was no talk of a convenience store at that intersection then. So I just wanted to give you that paper. Also, there's a picture there that shows that intersection, and just keep in mind that this thing is on a real hard bend curve, which is sight limiting, and I think those, those things need to be addressed in this text amendment change, especially having some of these to come back to the, to the board or the, or the zoning board to get approval, rather than just give a blanket approval. I think we need to look at each one of these individually, and I thank y'all for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
My name is Robert Harsh, 15834, Falling Waters Road, Williamsport. Like I just heard Ron say, this has been going on for 23 years now, and I think somewhere along the line, it's time for it to be put to bed, good or bad, it needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to cease. And one of the things is that we've been overlooking for 23 years is, nobody has never brought up the, the fact that the diamond interchange, that's Interstate 81 and 68 and 63, is one of the state's worst nightmares. I had a county commissioner, former county commissioner, call me and remind me that that's one of the state's worst nightmares is a diamond interchange. The whole interchange is diamond. The whole interchange is diamond. So, that needs to be looked at, and the more I get to thinking about the problems that we were talking about, the problems that exist on the interstate, is that just a mere fact that nobody has taken a look at 95. 95 is one of the main corners, north and south. They have a...a fueling convenience section of that interstate that's designated to take care of the north and south traffic. You just pull off the medium strip, fill up, fill your bellies up and head out. They're not trying to hold them in the county. Like Worthing County, you pull off the interstate here, you might be here a half a day. Up there, on 95, you just pull off, get your fuel, get your food, and head north or south, whatever way you go. We need to take a look at that and see if that may be something that will help to suffice the problems that we have on the interstate out here. And I know that this is not...this is not the prettiest headlines that could hit our paper. And I'm sure you all have seen that. Five people killed just north of it. And you remember, I said in one of the other meetings that Kurtchevle is the chairman of the Interstate Task Force. Not only has this just happened, but about a year ago, we lost three more kids from Clear Spring, right out here on 40. Somewhere along the line, we got to get this...we got to get this under control and get it stopped. My volunteer history in Williamsport, about 50 years, somewhere in the neighborhood, 50 years as a first responder, I was on most of the calls that happened in our immediate area. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 14 people has been killed on that intersection at 68 and Governor Lane Boulevard. Most of them...most of them are just because, you know, the locals and Mr. Gare, he had a quarter mile to go to get home, and damned if he didn't get killed right there looking into his house. Most of the deaths occur right in that intersection that we're talking about now. You can see, matter of fact, all the deaths occurred in that area. You can stand at the traffic light and look and see every one of the spots that say there's something terribly wrong. And I just...we just can't...we just can't continue to let this happen. We need to fix it, and we need to fix it. And coming in the backdoor approach for convenience stores and truck stops and whatever is not the way to fix it. I don't think...I don't think I can beat anything more to death. I think we all know what's going on. We need to stop it. We need to get it fixed, and we need to head down the right route. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ginger Griffith. My address is 17103 Tower Drive, Williamsport. Even though my mailing address is Williamsport, I live...there is one building lot between me and the Mid-Atlantic Crossroads Distribution Center, so I kind of think of myself as halfway as far as where I'm physically located. I'd just like to say that I'm opposed to the new definition of convenience stores, which includes tractor-trailer parking, because I believe it implies that tractor-trailer parking, regardless of the location, will be...it implies that convenience stores are entitled to have tractor-trailer parking regardless of the location of the convenience store and the layout of the surrounding roads. I feel that needs to be considered. The surrounding area to convenience stores, is it suitable to tractor-trailer traffic? I would also like to see a more comprehensive language that would prevent tractor-trailer...that would prevent trailer parking in the tractor-trailer area. I can see the tractor-trailer parking area becoming temporary storage for trailers or eventually being used as a transfer station for trailers. So, I'd like a little more language somewhere to safeguard the use of tractor-trailer parking to be only in connection with the convenience store and not be used as temporary trailer parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Still in the front row? Anyone else? Second row?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Fred Frederick. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor and the owner of Frederick Seibert and Associates. My address is 128 South Potomac Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. And today, I come before you to speak in support of finally updating the definition of convenience stores. The old definition of convenience stores, if I can find that quickly, states any retail establishment offering for sale prepackaged or pre-processed food products, household items, and other goods commonly associated with the same, and having a gross floor area, and this is the key factor, having a gross floor area of 5,000 square feet or less. Such establishments may also sell gasoline at retail prices. The area utilized for the sale of gasoline shall be considered as part of the gross floor area. That is a big problem. It's been a problem for years. That definition may have worked in the 70s and 80s for the old high C-stores, 7-Elevens, et cetera, but it no longer fits the definition of today's C-stores. The largest problem with the old definition is the 5,000 square feet. In fact, the gas canopies of C-stores often exceed 5,000 square feet. With that, I'd like to...and I did not run seven copies. I only ran one, but if I could start with Mr. Harvey and have him pass it, who is right. The first one shows a gas canopy, and it's a little over 5,000 square feet, and associated with that C-store, and it's a local C-store out of Hewitts, is a building that's 5,000 square feet. So, you can see all these C-stores, and that's a very...that's a very average one. The problem is with this 5,000-square-foot number, and Jill and her staff have done an excellent job in reviewing that, researching it, and realizing that that does not fit the industry standard, and it's not what the areas around us have in their definitions for C-stores. Today, the zoning administrator looks at each part of the business separately when they do a C-store. They look at food sales, retail sales, and fuel sales. They shouldn't need to do that. The old definition is extremely antiquated, and this new definition will meet the industry standard and not require the planning department and zoning administrator to dissect the business, break it into three segments in order to analyze it for compliance. This new definition is much more in line with the counties and states around us. I work in three states. I do this kind of work in three states, and this new definition is in line with those definitions for C-stores. Thus, I hope you will vote in favor of updating this definition and bring us into the 21st century with our definition of convenience stores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fredericks?
My name is Jason Diebelbis. I'm a local land use and real estate attorney. Address is 11125 Williamsport Road in Greencastle. Like Fred, I've been doing this a long time and have been wrestling with this definition for quite a long time. So, I would concur with Fred's statement that this tweak to the definition is most certainly needed primarily because of the existing confusion created by that 5,000-square-foot language. If you read it closely, it actually seems to be indicating that a convenience store is not a convenience store unless it's less than 5,000 square feet, but it's been interpreted and implied as a 5,000-square-foot limit. As Fred pointed out, it's somewhat impractical by today's standards. The other thing that's important I want to point out is there's ambiguity in the definition of truck stop and convenience store. That's why there's a lot of folks here today talking about truck stops. Historically, the zoning ordinance, it's been difficult to distinguish between those two uses, and that's one of the reasons that this new definition of the convenience store, and I believe there's a new definition of truck stop to follow, are important so that we can tell the difference. And both staff, engineers, attorneys, commissioners, BZA, planning commission, et cetera, can tell the difference definitively, and they know what the correct procedural track is for each. Is it permitted, or is it permitted by special exception, or is it not permitted? Right now, there's confusion all over the place because of the way these two uses are defined. So, high-level, this tweak to the definition is essential. Now, as you can see, the tweak that I would propose on behalf of several clients are rather modest, and they actually do not apply to the body of the definition itself, but focus more on the Section 22.15 Truck Parking Requirement section. I've shown there in redline the requested tweaks to that, and in Paragraph 1, it's a simple typo. I think there was an extra "the" there. In Paragraph 2, it's...this is with regard to the requirement that there be an independent internal circulation pattern for any truck parking associated with a convenience store. I think when the number of trucks parks...truck parking spaces exceeds a certain level, that makes sense, but when it's below a certain level, it's not necessary. So, what I've suggested is that there be a threshold for the internal circulation requirement of 10 spaces. Anything less than 10 spaces can probably be accommodated without having to have an independent circulation pattern. Two of the examples that I gave you there, it's an AC&amp;T store in Big Pool and an AC&amp;T store there in Lappins. They have a handful of spaces, four or five, I think. And you can see how if four or five spaces were required to have a separate internal circulation pattern, the site would have to be bigger. It would be...to me, it just seems excessive and unnecessary. Sort of a similar vein, Paragraph number three, it's a flat-out prohibition of truck parking spaces at convenience stores in the rural business district. And to answer the gentleman's question from earlier, the rural business district is an overlay zoning district. So, again, a strict prohibition seems to be excessive, but a limit seems very reasonable. The adverse effects come from the scale, not the mere existence of these truck parking spaces. We have to remember, eliminating truck parking spaces does not eliminate trucks. The trucks are still going to be around. So are large vehicles, tractors, ag vehicles, people with lawn mowers on the back of trailers and things like that, that often use these spaces in the rural district. If you eliminate the spaces altogether associated with these uses, they're just going to end up parking along the side of the road or where they don't belong, but where they can find the space. So, I think if we add it, an express prohibition of truck parking spaces in the rural business district, we're going to have unintended consequences that nobody wants, which is increased danger. So, again, I would suggest that there simply be a limit that say there cannot be more than 10. Anything less than 10 can probably be managed. Anything more than 10 probably reaches that threshold. That...if I get out of your way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Paul Minor, 14938 Falling Waters Road, Williamsport, Maryland, and I'm against increasing this or whatever. If you do that for these stores, then you've got Sheets on Downsfield Pike, Sheets on Sharpsburg Pike, Hewitt's Crossroad, they all could start truck parking. Washington County don't need truck parking or another truck stop. That intersection down there is real bad. Next week, the kids go back to school, 68 buses will go through there every day, plus all the other traffic from Amazon that has hundreds of trucks parked back there on the Governor Lane Boulevard that comes out every morning. And not only that, but if you let the trucks start stopping here, then we have the fumes again, all the running their engines and stuff like that. Cancer in our area is out of this world. It's out of control, and I think it just needs to be where it's at. We don't need to increase stuff more and more. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the second row? Third row? Anyone in the third row?
Good morning, President Barr and members of the Commission. My name's Kyle Smith. I'm with...I'm here with some members of my team from Sheets. Our address is 351 Sheets Way, Clayesburg, Pennsylvania, 16625. Thank you for welcoming Sheets here today. I'd like to speak briefly about the evolution of convenience stores in our experience and particularly their importance to Washington County. I should start by clarifying that I am here today with some members of my team to applaud and thank the county and this commission for considering the proposed modifications to the ordinance and show our support for this suggested language, intended to clarify some ambiguities that were mentioned earlier, among other things. As you might know, Sheets is a family-owned and family-operated company, which was founded in 1952 with one store in Altoona, Pennsylvania. Today, we operate almost 700 stores across six states, soon to be seven, and we proudly employ more than 24,500 individuals, a number that, as you can imagine, grows daily. Washington County has uniquely prominent place in the history of Sheets. Our store in Hancock was one of the earliest built outside of Pennsylvania, and that one opened in October of 1976. Furthermore, it was at our store in Williamsport, where then-store manager Earl Springer conceived the idea of the MTO, where made-to-order food and menu offering, and that happened back in 1986. That was an innovation that quickly became central to Sheets as a company, influenced the evolution of our company as well as convenience stores, fast feeders, quick-service restaurants nationwide. Today, we operate 10 stores in Washington County with three additional sites under contract. Our current stores employ in total approximately 350 people, and we are sincerely grateful for Washington County and its residents, who have allowed us to create such a strong base here. We're also a company that strives to give back to our communities through various means and opportunities, from assisting local nonprofit organizations with donations, partnering with Special Olympics Maryland, and donating food weekly to local food banks through our partnership with Feeding America, among other efforts. Now, it is true that, you know, our store locations have changed quite a bit since that first store opened in Washington County back in 1976. Our stores serve across the company more than 1.5 million people a day. Over time, we've worked hard to adapt to the changing needs of our customers, and as a result, we regularly seek opportunities to improve our prototypes to meet our customers' evolving needs, including consistently rebuilding or remodeling our store locations, including our locations here in Washington County, in order to, for example, among other things, improve access to our sites for convenience and safety, respond to customer demands for more variety in food and snack and beverage options, meet demand for more and varied fuel options and brands, and blends, excuse me, and provide sufficiently-sized restrooms, as well as incorporate seating so that our customers can take a break from their travels. The innovation, technology, and shift... evolving needs, including consistently rebuilding or remodeling our store locations, including our locations here in Washington County, in order to, for example, among other things, improve access to our sites for convenience and safety, respond to customer demands for more variety in food and snack and beverage options, meet demand for more and varied fuel options and brands, and blends, excuse me, and provide sufficiently sized restrooms, as well as incorporate seating so that our customers can take a break from their travels. The innovation, technology, and shifting demand of our industry faces, that our industry faces on a daily basis, including innovations originating here in Washington County, like the MTO, have created a need for larger store locations that can better serve our communities. Part of that evolution is understanding who our customers are, and we're proud to offer many sites dedicated to the needs of truck drivers, since they are an essential part of the U.S. economy. Over time, our stores have evolved to include fueling operations for truck drivers, and areas where they can park safely and get much-needed rest, and required, legally-required rest. Our goal in expanding these services goes beyond expanding just the business of Sheets. We're well aware of the challenges faced by truck drivers because of the hundreds employed by Sheets regularly supplying our stores with products, and many more transporting fuel through our partner, CLI Transport. There's a shortage of truck parking in every state and region across the United States. A U.S. Department of Transportation report in 2019 found that 98% of truck drivers regularly experience problems finding safe parking. That same report stated that 70% of drivers have been forced to violate federal hours of service rules because they just can't find a safe place to park. This problem is especially magnified along the Interstate 81 corridor, where we specifically have been focusing our current truck diesel expansion strategy. In that area, the problem is so severe that federal funding has been requested to help address the issue across multiple states. Our research isn't limited to just published reports and new impending legislation. We've spent significant time and resources pulling our customers, and hopefully future customers, including the commercial truck drivers, to help fine-tune our offering to best meet the collective needs and desires of all categories or classifications of the customers that we serve. We're proud to dedicate our resources towards this challenge through additional locations that offer a place to fuel up safe and surveyed parking, 24/7 convenience that all of our store locations provide. Our goal at every store location is to be the best neighbor that we can, and we view helping to address the widespread lack of available truck parking as a central part of that promise. Thank you for your time this morning. Sheets is proud to be a part of the communities in Washington County, and we look forward to finding more ways to help and serve its residents into the future.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Hayes, 17002 Fair Play Farms Court in Fair Play, Maryland. You know, so I've been involved with this whole thing, truck stop at Exit 1, for a number of years. The original intention of that, adding that text amendment, was to, you know, make projects accountable, to go through a special hearing to be a truck stop. And I guess what I see with this new regulation is, and what I hear from others, is that, I guess there's a need to update the, you know, the definition of convenience stores. And I get that. The problem is, what I see is done, it's basically taken a step back in terms of attaching more or less truck stops or truck parking to convenience store facilities, kind of a backdoor, it's a step backwards, I see, because all of a sudden, there's no hearing, there's no special exception hearing, the way I understand it. So I think that's just not, not the way to go. Those projects still need to be assessed when you're going to start adding trucks because of potential conflicts with residential and other business interests. And I think that makes sense. And in terms of the project on Exit 1, that's, that's, that's been longstanding. I guess I would suggest something for you all to think about. I think that what you hear is, okay, there's a whole issue with, we need truck parking, we need truck stops. And things like, they're always trying to tie those things together. And what I see around the county is a lot of warehouses. And I don't know if anybody's thought about this, but why not, you know, make, there's a certain requirement, there's going to be a certain square footage of area associated with a warehouse project that has to be used for truck parking by, not just by the facility, by any truck parking. These warehouses are mostly close to the interstate, so there would be truck parking. It'd be kind of a public part of a private project, because these warehouses are huge and the acreages are huge. Why not put some acres aside for parking, you know, for truck parking? Of course, then there would be truck stops where they would fuel and eat, but that would be a separate issue, and we wouldn't have to, you know, we have enough of those in the county. And just one last thing I would say is that, having lived, I live off Exit 1, and I would just challenge anybody who's, you know, driven around the state, around the country, you tell me, where you've come off the interstate to a truck stop that is off on the main road and then off on a secondary road, you, I don't, you don't see it. And that's a dangerous intersection, it's always been. So I just put that out there, but just think about any truck stop you've been to. So, again, there may be a need to update, you know, update the convenience stores, but truck stops still should be a separate exception. It has to be considered within each project. And again, I just consider you to think outside the box a little bit with all these warehouses, how truck parking could be incorporated into those facilities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Barbara Hubermill, and I have lived on Spielman Road since 1966. I come before you this morning asking you to deny the request by planning and zoning to change the definition of a convenience store for Washington County. Our community has been opposing a second truck stop to come to that intersection for 25 years. We have one truck stop already on Governor Lane Boulevard. Do we really need another one? Yet, planning and zoning seems to want to make our lives even more hazardous than they are now. I urge you to vote no to this proposal. Our intersection, a diamond-shaped intersection, is unable to handle any of that, any of the additional traffic. It is not in the best interest of our county and its citizens, the taxpayers and voters who are backbone of it all. With so much large construction going on all around us, I cannot help but think about possible conflict of interest issues. In my opinion, there should never be the slightest doubt concerning our elected officials benefiting from such projects. We have had local judges recuse themselves because of conflict of interest. Also, please, think about our environment. The air is polluted, as are our wells. Does anybody even care? Are you not concerned for your loved ones or yourself? Stop this onslaught of additional problems from tractor-trailers. Make our roads safer to welcome those looking to be amazed at the history we are proud to own. Exit 1 on 81 is considered the gateway to the history of Washington County and has more to offer than any other place in this nation at one, at one place. Yes, please deny the request to change the definition of convenience stores in Washington County. Let's move forward and upward and make us proud to live in Washington County, named after the first president of these United States. Thank you.
Michael Tedrick, 11423 Ernstville Road, Big Pool, Maryland. I've been fighting this truck stop issue for over five years. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for allowing me time to speak about this text amendment that goes against the policies, laws, and rules already in place. They were placed there to protect the people of Washington County for health and safety concerns. This county's mission statement says, "To support, strengthen individual, community, public safety, and welfare, protecting the environment." This text amendment will not protect the environment, or our safety, or our welfare, and will only bring more health and safety concerns in this area that already have troubled past with accidents, some of which were fatal. It seems like this county does very little to protect its citizens and historic properties, but will bend over backwards for these developers. This text amendment is playing a game of smoke and mirrors, sanding the sharp edges is not fixing the problem already have. My question to you Commissioners is, would you want this in or around your property? Because if you pass this, they will place them on every corner or intersection all over this county, and maybe near your schools or a family member's home. This needs to end. I urge you to vote no to this text amendment and help save what little bit of Washington County we have left. Furthermore, the truck stop behind my backyard is 163 feet from my bedroom window. On any given night, you can hear 12, 13, 14 tractor and trailers, even though there's only a little over a handful of parking spots. They park in the entrance exit every day, even though they place no parking signs there. It's a safety concern. If somebody's having a heart attack and there's three tractor and trailers blocking that, how is emergency people going to get in there? When they get off that exit, coming eastbound from Hancock Dam, a 53-footer cannot make that turn, turn into that establishment without crossing the center line or jumping the curb. These issues go on every day. There's no basavers in that parking lot. So any rainwater or when they power wash it, all that water goes out and dumps into a ravine that circles around, goes in the ground, and ends up in our wells. I asked you guys over five years ago to do something about this, and nothing has been done. I'm tired of fighting this fight. I'm tired of coming in here, expressing my feelings, trying to protect my property. The last gift my grandparents gave me before they passed away, they knew how this was zoned before they purchased that property, along with every other one of these issues in this county. The reason why they have rules and policies and procedures is to follow them. They knew how these properties were zoned, and it shouldn't be allowed, and this text amendment needs to be extinguished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I get your first name again, sir?
Michael Tedrick. You have my cell phone number, you never responded. Each and every one of you Commissioners have been invited to come to my house, see what I see, hear what I hear, smell what I smell, and not one of you have ever tried.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rob Farree at 16235 Schaefer Road, Sharpsburg, Maryland. I am a local resident that uses Exit 1 and Lappins Road a couple times a day, but I'm here as an employee of Bowman Development, part of Bowman Group of Companies in Williamsport, Maryland. And I won't repeat what already has been said in support of this improvement of the convenience store definition in the zoning ordinance. But we do work with several convenience store businesses, and we've experienced the difficulties working with this obsolete definition. As you heard, convenience stores are getting more popular in this area and across the country. They are evolving. They're offering more services, acting as local restaurants, et cetera. The zoning ordinance needs to keep up, just as the ordinance did when drive-through pharmacies got more popular, or when urgent care centers started popping up in retail centers. We've got to evolve with the services that the residents require. Included in your package are several letters justifying, supporting the need of truck parking to allow drivers to rest, as required by federal law and common sense. We don't want tired truck drivers on our highways. We, as local residents, use the interstates just as well as the trucks do. And they do park on the local streets and ramps. We need to get that off. In that package is a very involved MDOT study, studying the feasibility of place, of studying about the need for trucks and the safety reasons why truck parking is important, and I hope you had a look at it. In fact, MDOT is currently studying the feasibility of placing truck parking on land around the interstate exits throughout the state. That's how desperate the need is. It just seems to us that the limited truck parking, as proposed by some of these convenience store operators, offering parking and fueling in at least the HI zoning areas, is a good compromise. They're not full-fledged truck stops, okay? They're not. They're not 200, 300 trucks. They don't offer amenities. They're there for the convenience of the drivers to fuel, eat, use a restroom, get the required rest, and carry on. They don't make money when they're parked. That's what these convenience stores are offering, particularly around the interstate Lastly, I just want to reflect, the last time I was here in front of this body around the end of November of '22 last year, and it was related to this topic, what is different this time, for what this board deserves credit for, is this time, this definition improvement went through the proper process. It allowed staff to research and present their professional recommendations to the planning commission, whose members are appointed by this board for this very purpose. They had a public hearing. I'm sure all that is in your documentation. The planning commission had time to consider it, hold the public hearing for input, and making this recommendation to you today. And you have all that information. As a local development company, you all know, we will follow, always follow, county ordinances, development rules, and processes, and we're glad that you're doing the same today. And since this was brought up by some folks here about the development that we're proposing at Exit 1, a convenience store with limited truck parking and fueling, the fact is, it has to go through a process. It goes through a planning commission. It goes to all the agencies. It goes to state highway. There's traffic studies done. And in fact, since it was brought up, this particular store will result in over several million dollars of infrastructure improvement, including the intersection that's been cited here as being dangerous. You guys don't have the budget to do that. It's a state road. The state road doesn't have a budget to do it. That's how these improvements get done, by private developers who do the right sort of development at the right locations. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Good morning. My name is Bill Erskine, address 7120 Columbia Gateway Drive, Columbia, Maryland. Zip code is 21045. I professionally, I am a land use and zoning attorney, and I'm here on behalf of the Bowman Group here today. And I won't repeat what has been said this morning by many of the supporters of this, of this text amendment, but I would like to focus on the Highway Interchange District in itself. My comments in support of the applicability of these amendments to the Highway Interchange District should not, however, be interpreted as any... District should not, however, be interpreted as any kind of belief that it's not warranted in some of the other districts where it's been proposed. It's just that I haven't had a time to really study those other districts in great lengths, so I wish not to comment on those. But so I'll speak just to the Highway Interchange District. First of all, the location of the Highway Interchange District is, as the name would suggest, very close to highway interchanges. And the purpose of the Highway Interchange District is to provide services to travelers, incidentally, including truck drivers. There's no real reason to discriminate against truck drivers. They too need to eat. They too need to use the restrooms, and they too need fuel. So these are perfect locations for this type of use. And when you consider the types of uses that are permitted in the Highway Interchange District, and when I say this as a matter of right, not as a special exception, but a permitted use that's already in the records, it includes warehouses, and it includes truck terminals, which could have hundreds of trucks coming and leaving every day. And so I'm at a loss to understand why, in a district that permits truck terminals and warehouses already, why allowing a really nominal amount of truck parking intended to service the traveling truck drivers? Why that might be offensive or inappropriate in any way? It's a small amount of parking. And incidentally, it's not a truck stop in the ordinary sense, I think, as a lot of people think of it. There's no hotel. I mean, there's no overnight accommodations. There's no laundry. You know, it's not that, there's no mechanical repair. So it really is just very modest truck parking in an area where truck parking is, you know, just desperately needed. There is a report, as Mr. Farie commented, from the Maryland Department of Transportation, that emphasizes the extreme shortage of parking for truck drivers here in the state of Maryland. By the way, particularly here at the intersections of Route 70 and Route 81, I mean, an area that's cited specifically. And the risk of not having adequate parking is fatigue driving. And there's perhaps no greater threat to the traveling public than is fatigue driving. So I would implore you, from a safety point of view, to provide convenient places where these truck drivers can get the services they need and also get the rest that they need. I'm going to close with just one comment, and it has to do with, there was a suggestion that if this were to pass, that there would be no review and no oversight. That's actually not true at all. The planning commission reviews the site plan for every development that would take place. And if you look at the HI Highway Interchange zoning regulations, they set forth criteria for approval that the planning commission has to find. The very first criteria, safe ingress and egress from the site all the way back to the interchange. That's their first criteria. If they don't find that, they can't approve it. And so it's highly reviewed by state agencies, by county agencies. Safety is very much considered. And as Mr. Farie said, and I'll close with this, it is an opportunity for improvements. If there's an existing safety concern, this actually is the way to get it addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Still on row three? Back row, top row? Did I miss anyone? Hearing no further comments. Open it up to the commissioners. Any comments, remarks?
Do we open up the comments now, or do we adjourn from the hearing and then go to?
If you have questions regarding the actual application, I think it'd be appropriate to ask them now.
Okay. And comments, too?
Yes.
Okay. Good. I have some comments, and I have some questions.
Go for it.
Well, yeah, I've been focused on this issue since I knew it was coming up. And, you know, I understand that there are some conflating of issues here, because I'm focused on the convenience stores in the text, but it's being conflated with Truck Stop and Exit One, as Mr. Farie and others have stated. My concerns are about safety, quality of life, business interests, make sure it's smart development. And my understanding of this was really not specifically about Exit One. I tend to agree that we do need an updated, clear definition of convenience stores. No disagreement there. I'm not convinced that we have the right definition at all. I wonder about, and I'm not convinced that there's a complete understanding of what the second and third order effects would be of opening up convenience stores to truck parking. If you do the math, and I've asked this, you're saying the average is about 10,000 square foot, because that includes the canopy and a 5,000-square-foot building, which is smaller than what they're building right now. That would lead to over 70 long-haul truck parking spaces permissible at a location. Do we want to create magnets for convenience stores with long-haul truck parking just outside of Smithsburg or on Leidersburg Pike, coming south of Waynesboro as they come down 64? And make that a draw? Why do we want to expand convenience stores with 70 truck parks, parking places, outside of the Highway Interchange? I'm convinced about the need for them on the Highway Interchange. I don't doubt that there's a safety issue. But how much do we need to make it impact outside of the Highway Interchange? I'm not convinced of that. I don't see the data. I've asked for the data, and I'd like to see a map of every convenience store in the specific areas that we're looking at here in the projections, because, you know, we could really open up the door to some real, real problems, and there would be bigger uproars than you have on Williamsport right now. So that's a real concern. I think there were some good ideas brought up here, but I am puzzled as to why MDE, Maryland Department of Environment, and our staff have not looked at the dangers of the wastewater running off into people's yards and into the well water in areas, if that's true. I believe it's true, you know? So the second question I have, and it goes to, if you approve these convenience stores, what are the restrictions and the buffers that are actually going to be enforced to prevent noise pollution, lighting pollution, problems of traffic impacting residences that might be 150, 200 yards away? Now, I'm talking about outside the Highway Interchange area. I mean, that's a real concern. I thought we heard another good idea here about maybe warehouses writ large could be encouraged in some way, through incentives, carrots or sticks, to make the land more available for parking, their parking spaces for this, if you have such a problem with it. I thought that was a unique and very good idea. I don't want to make the situation worse for our community, and I think we underestimate the potential problems that could come from this. Why do we want to go outside the Highway Interchange area? I still don't have that answer. What's the objective there? So I got lots of notes here. There's a couple other here. Why is it Washington County's responsibility to take the lead in fixing the truck driver problem? To contribute, yes, the truck parking problem, but we're 12.5 miles of the road on Highway Why is it our responsibility? We can contribute. I understand that. I think that's what the Exit One Truck Stop and parking, but where's the enforcement going to be if you have trucks, long-haul trucks parking, staying there 24 hours, 36 hours? Are there going to be, who enforces the limits on the parking there? The private owner? I don't know. And I'll end with this, okay? I'm still puzzled about the definition of a grocery store in Cascade. If we can't get that clear, where our members on the planning commission can agree to what a grocery store is, and the staff can't tell me what a grocery store is, and we vote for a Dollar General market there, okay, that the citizens oppose because we squeeze it in, shoehorn it in as a grocery store, I'm worried about what the consequences will be here. I want things clearly written out so that any layman can understand it, so that it doesn't get obliterated by lawyers and zoning specialists that will impose something on our communities that is not needed, isn't wanted, and isn't going to improve the quality of life. So that's my impression right now.
Yeah, you know, I think you had a lot of good points there. I think a lot of your questions you just let off with could be answered by staff pretty quickly. I think some of your concerns about light pollution and things like that will be addressed in a site plan that's already established of what this site plan is going to look like. But I think some of your other questions are, I'm sort of like the Highway Interchange. I'd have to get back to with Jill and the crew, and how many outside of Highway Interchange are available to make this happen? I would like to know, is there 20 more locations that could happen outside of Interchange? That would be a question I would have. But I think some of them that you let off with could be answered pretty quickly, but I think there's some that can't be answered pretty quickly. So I think we should probably gather a little bit more information.
Any other comments? I sense the recommendation is to take this under advisement at this time?
I think I would like to just fine-tune it before I do make a decision.
I would like to table it. I need a lot of data. I'd like maps. I'd like to have zoning questions really explained more clearly to me in layman's language, because I'm not a zoning specialist. I'm not a lawyer in this area. But I want to protect the interests of our community and allow for smart development. And where appropriate, where it makes sense, you know?
Jill, do you want to try to answer some of that while you're sitting up there?
So I'm hearing the concerns, and I understand the concerns. What I'm here to propose is taking those concerns and taking those back and remanding this back to the planning commission to answer some of these questions that the commissioners have. That way, you know, we're not taking it under advisement and then still having more questions and more questions. I think that I'm hearing, I think, what the concerns are. If there's other questions or concerns, please forward those to me. What I would probably recommend from this board would be to remand it back to the planning commission to answer those questions for you, to see if they would want to tweak this more and have a better feeling for where the commissioners want to go with this. You don't have to. If you'd rather just leave it the way it is and take it under advisement, you can do that as well.
I would, I'd just like you to clarify one thing for me real quick, and I think I know the answer to this, but this is, because I've got to listen to a lot of this. I didn't vote on it, obviously, being a member of the planning commission. This mostly centered around Highway Interchange, but it could go into other districts, correct?
Yes. I mean, I think the primary intent was the Highway Interchange, but there was some availability in some of the smaller districts that are closer to the interchanges, like the BLBG, the ones that are closer to the interchanges. This could be an option. I completely understand the concern about that, and there are other BLBGs in Smithsburg and places like that. So I think that's a concern that's valid, and we should take back to the planning commission and discuss a little more.
What I'd like to see is what damage or what clarifications get screwed up. I think we have to define. What gets, what's it screw up by saying hypothetically now, I'm not proposing this at this point, but what if we just keep it in Highway Interchange? How does that screw up a definition in another zoning area?
Yeah, and I think what Commissioner Harvey, he sent me an email yesterday, I'm sorry I didn't respond yet, about requesting a map showing these areas. I think a map would be very good to show you where these convenience stores are currently located, where the residential districts are located in comparison, and to give you a better idea logistically where these things are located and what the impacts could be. So that's what I'm hearing, is a lot of concerns that seem to be, let's remand this kind of back to the planning commission. Let's relook at this. Let's make sure that the unintended consequences don't sneak up on us.
I would wonder, are we, I'd like to submit questions for the record for staff at some point in the very near future, if that's okay?
The record would remain open. If we remand it back to the planning commission, we would leave the record open, so therefore, you know, anybody can still comment on this. And we would absolutely be happy to take those comments and take it back to the planning commission in the future.
Yeah, I think convenience stores need to have some, just like the sheets in Greencastle or some other sheet. I think that's necessary, but I just don't know how many and where.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, that's good. And I just want, I think we're all interested in making sure that we balance those interests of, you know, trucking, fueling, safety, okay? But, you know, there's four sides to a box, and, you know, we just need to make sure we align it all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
I'll take that as consensus. We'll remand this back to the planning commission. Okay. Thank you.
We are running.
A motion to adjourn from the public hearing? Or are we out of it already?
No, we got adjourned.
Yeah, the public hearing has concluded. There was consensus that the matter be remanded to the planning commission for additional deliberations.
Okay, so we don't need a vote? We don't need a vote? Okay.
Next lady.
We have been going for nearly two hours. You want to take a three-minute recess, please? Good morning again. Thank you for your patience. We had a rather lengthy public hearing, and at this point in time, I'd like to allow the folks from dementia-friendly America, Washington County, to make their presentation, if you'll each introduce yourself, please.
Okay, hello. My name is Rebecca Blue. I am the Vice President of State Home Senior Services and Executive Director of Betty's Wish. I'm also a certified Alzheimer's Disease and Dementia Care Trainer, and I am part of the action team, which was formed with the goal to make Washington County dementia-friendly. I'm here to talk about the need for dementia-friendly Washington County today alongside other action team members. So you'll hear from several of us. I do believe you all were given a PowerPoint, if you have access to that. That would be good. I don't know if we can show it.
Yeah, I think they're going to check if you gave them a PowerPoint. There we go.
Yep.
Here we have it.
There we go.
There it is. So I'll be speaking to you in regards to the need. Through my work and training in my positions, I encounter individuals and families who are trying their best to navigate this disease and all the stuff that comes with it. There are over 3,000 people in Washington County who are living with dementia. Early onset dementia is impacting more people each year. One myth that is commonly accepted as truth by many is that only older people can get Alzheimer's. In reality, it can strike people in their 30s, 40s. In reality, it can strike people in their 30s, 40s, and 50s, which is called younger onset or also referred to as early onset. So I became a part of this action team because I know that our community needs help with this, and I believe in the power of education. And I also believe that the stigma that revolves around dementia and those living with dementia needs to be broken, and I think it can be done with education and getting our community involved. We want to help educate professionals and service workers who are currently unprepared to help these individuals. We want to focus on things such as hotels, grocery stores, restaurants, banks, utility and government offices, and transportation providers, because these people see so many. And I think that it would be good to have them educated and help if they were to be able to recognize some signs of dementia through education. They could better serve those people and have, help them have an enjoyable experience, just like everyone else. And who we are will be brought to you by John and Carolyn.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Perrigo, and this is my husband, John Perrigo. John has asked me to speak for both of us, and we've been.
As any good husband would do.
So much for speaking for both of us. We've been residents of Washington County since 2004. We chose this place after retiring from careers with the federal government in Washington, DC. It's been a great choice for us. We love it here, but dementia has intruded on our retirement. We began our dementia journey when John was diagnosed with mild cognitive impairment in 2010. I had noticed subtle changes in his memory and his sense of direction. He was then diagnosed with Alzheimer's in 2014, thanks to a special PET scan, which was part of a research project in which he was participating. Otherwise, that one test alone would have cost us $5,000 just to confirm his diagnosis. In past years, a confirmation of diagnosis is only done postmortem. So now we have some testing that can be done, but it's expensive. We made a commitment from the very beginning of this journey to be totally transparent with everyone we know and meet. It helps people to understand, and it gives us more support and understanding from family and friends and neighbors. But it's caused awkwardness and sometimes disbelief in their responses. In the minds of many, John doesn't look like he has Alzheimer's. But John is the face of more than 3,000 Washington Countyans living with the various dementias and in the various stages of these incurable illnesses. I'm the face of more than 3,000 caregivers or care partners. Some paid, but most are the unpaid family members of those who care for them. Most people know what the late stages of these incurable dementias look like. Almost no past memory, unable to dress or feed themselves or recognize family at times, and then they die likely of some opportunistic illness. It's a grim picture. Many in the late stage, even some in middle or some in early, are being cared for and are fine assisted living memory care facilities in Washington County, with some still in their homes. But most of the 3,000-plus are somewhere in the early and moderate stages of dementia, often with no apparent symptoms to strangers. Make no mistake that we all need understanding, help, and support, no matter the stage, no matter the part of the journey that we are on. We're here today to help make Washington County dementia-friendly for all of us. The problem is stigma and lack of knowledge. Even some of our family refused to believe John's diagnosis. Even now, you may be around John for some time before you might see some symptoms. He has fully kept his positive attitude, is quick with a joke, among many other wonderful attributes. He once managed billions of dollars for the United States Navy with housing assets and properties around the world and had a very large housing management staff. But he can no longer balance our checkbook and manage our personal finances. He has traveled to more than 40 countries on five continents and every U.S. state, but he can no longer drive a car. John has been lost in our little mall on two occasions, but we try to stay focused on what he can do, but we want to give you examples of what he can't do so you can see that he doesn't look like he has Alzheimer's. Make no mistake that he and I now work full-time to provide him the quality of life that sustains the slow progression, and we're among the very luckiest of people. Not every family gets to enjoy as much time as we have on their Alzheimer's journey. And not every family can do what we have done. I think a lot about what I call the sandwich generation, those that are living here in Washington County that have full-time jobs, they have children to care for, and they have a parent with Alzheimer's. I don't know how they do it. I don't know how they manage, because we work full-time to ensure that he gets cognitive stimulation, social stimulation, the proper diet and exercise, and full engagement in his life. We love the resources in Washington County, like our beloved art museum, the Maryland Theater, and our dinner theater, the Leidersburg Cinemas, Movies for Grownups at the Boonsborough Library. We're frequent goers there. We love our city, county, state, and federal parks and so on. We try to take advantage of this wonderful quality of life we have here. And we look forward to the return of baseball. We're gardeners. John grows great tomatoes. But we also appreciate the access to local fresh fruits and vegetables that Washington County provides for us. We've watched others in this county be where John is right now on his journey, but then they've had traumatic events like a car accident or a fall, and they move to late-stage dementia at lightning speed. It's a constant worry, but we try very hard to live one day at a time. The vigilance and stress take their toll on caregivers. So why are we here today? You have influence and you have power to make our lives easier by making Washington County dementia-friendly, by keeping our stories at the top of your minds when you're meeting out policies and funding, by getting yourselves and your staff fully educated about Alzheimer's and the other dementias, and encouraging others to do the same, by being transparent and bravely talking about Alzheimer's and the other dementias. Just by virtue of statistics, you personally will be touched in some way by dementia. You'll know someone, you'll have someone in your family. Don't let people continue to think that the only face of Alzheimer's is the late stage. It's that end stage. Think about John and I as you go about your work. We love this county. We chose to be here, as I said. We're staying here. We're going to be buried here someday. We hope that you all will make a personal commitment to ensure that our county is knowledgeable and that it's the dementia-friendliest of all the counties in this great state. Thank you for listening. I'll be followed by Pete.
Good morning. My name is Pete McMillan. I'm the Executive Director of Summerford of Hagerstown. We're an assisted living and memory care community that's been serving the residents of Washington County for over 23 years. Day in and day out, I see the need of people who are struggling, who are living with dementia. And so as a result of this, keeping folks like John and Carolyn in mind, there's a, we have a group of professionals and volunteers who've come together to work together to be able to provide education, to provide resources, to provide key stakeholders across the county with information about dementia, to make it top of mind for them, and to understand how they can best help and best support people like John and Carolyn. So what we plan to do as an action team, we'll see on the next slide, that we propose to go to local businesses, go to government offices, employers, restaurants, retail establishments, first responders, to be able to provide them the information and the training. It only takes 15 minutes. It's a lunch, it's not even lunch break. It's a coffee break, that we can go in and provide information so folks can recognize signs of dementia, so they can know how to interact and the best ways to provide service for those with dementia. So working together as a group, as volunteers, we're able to provide that resource, to provide those, provide that awareness to those in the community. Working together through this, our key deliverable will be to be recognized by the organization known as Dementia Friendly America as a dementia-friendly community. And that will allow us to be placed on their registry of dementia-friendly communities, and will help to bring more folks like John and Carolyn to our community as we have that distinction as a county. So we have Amanda, who'll be talking about her next steps.
Good afternoon. I'm Amanda Crawford, and I am a volunteer on several boards and a support dementia, Alzheimer's, as I've had a family member with dementia. So our request is, with your support, a proclamation be granted to establish Washington County as a dementia-friendly community. We ask that you save the date for our kickoff event on October 10th. All are invited, as we connect with businesses in Washington County to gain the support as well. And that will be held at the Washington County Library on the 10th of October from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Informal invites will be handed to you as well.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And if you know my story, I had a parent, and I think everyone here sooner or later in your life comes across someone in your family. My family, some of the members denied it, didn't want to accept it. They got more and more difficult to handle mom till she was a client and patient down at Summerford. And it's also hard on the caregiver. And my request today would be the Commissioners to agree to have your committee, our committee, be in touch with our staff to begin some safety training issues, Ms. County Administrator. And are there any questions for the folks before we have a proclamation?
Yeah, I do have a couple. Carolyn, very nice presentation. Thank you. John's a lucky guy, gets a health program, he gets an exercise program. John, you're good. I like it. I'm proud that anyone in the room doesn't know this. Can you tell me?
I'm a very lucky guy because she's getting weight for size.
Yeah, and you know how to answer correctly all the time. So what's the difference in dementia and Alzheimer's?
Dementia is a symptom such as a runny nose. So you can get a runny nose from being out in the cold and coming inside. You can have a runny nose from having a cold. You can have a runny nose from allergies. So that's the symptom. Alzheimer's is one of many causes of the symptom of dementia. It's one disease process that causes that. You also have Lewy body dementia. You have Parkinson's dementia. There's a whole slew of different types of dementias that can, that can cause, or causes of the dementia that will cause that symptom.
Okay. You know, one of the difficulties is recognize that someone is giving you a difficult time. If you had this training, you might claw back a little bit and say, wait a minute, I need to be a little bit more patient, that someone may be in the early stages of dementia and allows for a better quality of life when you have that recognition.
That's true. My son's a cashier at a Y supermarkets here in town, and he will from time to time have folks with dementia. Now, he's been a volunteer at Summerford over the years, so he understands and is familiar with what to do, but a lot of folks have never had that experience and would have no clue what to do and how to support those people in those situations.
Okay, before we present the proclamation, would it be okay if the Commissioners agreed to some sort of consensus that we will start?
Sure.
Start with training? We'll schedule that with you.
Yeah, I'm good.
Is that okay?
I'm good.
Would you all folks join me up there by the flags? Did you know the difference between Alzheimer's and dementia?
I did not.
Oh, it feels so bad now.
You never know.
So I guess dementias and Alzheimer's.
Present a proclamation declaring dementia-friendly Washington County, August 22, 2023. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the seventh-leading cause of death in the United States, an estimated 5.8 million individuals are living with Alzheimer's disease and related dementia issues, whereas more than 16 million people provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. Washington County offers their support to those living with dementia and recognize those who care and provide for them. And whereas numerous local partners, experts, professionals, and residents are devoted to the success of the dementia-friendly initiative to ensure that communities are equipped to support people living with dementia and their caregivers. Now therefore, me, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim Washington County dementia-friendly and call upon our citizens to learn more about dementia as we work to create a local community where people living with dementia are supported, enjoy a high quality of life with meaningful purpose and value, signed this day by the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations.
That's so wonderful.
Now we all go forward here, get a picture with all the Commissioners?
Sure.
You two lead the way, and we'll have you right there in the middle.
Right there.
Yeah, right. Commissioner, would you join us, please?
I'm so pleased. This is a wonderful day.
You were? That's my big kid.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tuck.
Yes, ma'am.
You can hold that buddy.
Carolyn, step up just a little bit. I'll get you on.
That work?
I'll squeeze in here. You just move forward, and then I will stand. Move here like this. Almost as tall as Randy.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
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 She's walking away.
Let me give you my card so that you can reach out to me regarding potential training.
Very nice. Appreciate it.
Hey, you're a big shot now. I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I can't believe John said you were.
I know.
Why would you say that?
I don't know.
Did Jeff say anything about it?
I don't know.
Did you hear him? He told me scissors are only two words again.
I have a good marriage, ma'am. He said that's just you.
He's a smart man.
Yep.
Okay, we're ready to move forward. Next item is expenditure of a cured payment in lieu of funds in accordance with the Forest Conservation Act.
There they go. Guy's been patient. Thank you.
Next item is expenditure of a cured payment in lieu of funds in accordance with the Forest Conservation Act.
There they go. Guy's been patient, thank you.
Yeah, that's the price up there.
I bet you won't forget me now, will you, Jeff?
Uh, good morning, everyone. Travis Allen, Senior Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here just to introduce the matter, but, uh, um, as you probably recall, for, uh, development projects that cannot meet their mitigation requirements under the county's forest conservation ordinance, uh, onsite or through various other methods in the ordinance. Those monies are paid into the county's forest conservation fund once they're accrued to a certain point. Um, Soil Conservation District, who the county has a memorandum of understanding with, contracts willingly with landowners to put, uh, easements on forest and their property to expend those funds and meet the requirements of that ordinance. Um, this, uh, particular couple of easements that they have, um, to present to you here today, uh, was taken up by the planning commission at their meeting on August seventh. They did unanimously recommend for approval of these easements. Um, so they are here to kind of give you the specifics of these latest easement candidates.
Thanks Travis, um, my name's Mark Kendall with Soil, uh, Washington County Soil Conservation. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my agency. We're seeking your approval, um, to use expend payment in lieu of funding for two, um, forest conservation easements totaling approximately sixty-three acres in our county. Um, the first parcel is owned by Mr. Phil Baker Shank, it's located on sixty-seven twenty Remsberg Road. Um, it's approximately six point eight seven acres. It's predominantly populated with the, what the DNR considers cove hardwood species. Which are found to be generally rare in our area due to most of the, um, native lands for these species being converted to agricultural lands. Um, the understory of this parcel's, uh, populated by a large number of native wild, uh, wildflower species. And, um, there's an overall low impact of invasive species on site. Much so that, um, there is actually native species regeneration happening on the site. Which is generally rare in our area as well. There are several large wolf trees on this property that are located on the property lines. And the DNR estimates these trees to date from the Civil War and they believe that they could have potentially been there to witness the Battle of Antietam. Um, putting the easement on this parcel would, uh, protect the mains drainage channel that outlets the Potomac River. And it would adjoin the CNO Canal, um, Natu- National Historical Easement, which would connect it to hundreds of other acres. Um, protected for wildlife, um, corridors and that sort of thing. The second parcel is owned by Mr. Dave Foltz, it's located at sixty-five hundred Sharpsburg Pike. Um, we're looking to purchase fifty-six point four acres of the two hundred and forty-nine acre parcel. Um, there's four separate sections consisting primarily of native hardwood species. On this property, there's also several trees that date from the Civil War area that could have witnessed the Battle of Antietam. This property is special in the fact that it is the only documented occurrence of October lady's tressis orchid on private land in Washington County. The only other property that has this plant is Antietam National Battlefield. That being said, this property does adjoin that Antietam National Battlefield. It would also adjoin the Baker Shank parcel, which would carry the easement to the Potomac River. If we placing easement on this property would protect two perennial streams that discharge directly into the Potomac River. And, um, we estimate the cost to purchase both these parcels at one hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars of the payment in lieu of funding. As of, uh, July nineteenth, the balance in that fund was three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, that flower is for real, because we Googled it at the planning, what's the, what's the?
You did, yes.
It's, uh, October lady's tressid orchid, orc, orc, orchid, yeah.
Yep.
And you're, there's, you know, I would, I, I can see no reason at all not to do this, so. If anybody has, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the expenditure of the P I, P I L funds or, uh, the acquisitions of the properties mentioned.
Second.
So wolf trees? Yes, the DNR refers to them as wolf trees. And the way I understand it is, is back in the eighteen?
What kind of tree is that?
Well, it's back in the eighteen hundreds, they didn't have property line markers. So they would plant trees on the property lines. And usually when those lands were converted to agriculture, those trees remained. So they were left to grow over years and years and years and become very large specimens. Um, those trees remain today and that, the DNR estimates that they were planted prior to the Battle of Antietam.
What kind of tree is a wolf tree?
It's, it's, and, and, I don't want to word this.
Do I need to look it up separately?
Yeah.
It's, it's typically a native species.
It has leaves and a trunk.
Right, so, and then these, these proper, do we do any forest conservation closer to the urban growth area?
Yes, so, you know, again, within the forest conservation ordinance, there's, there's a list of techniques which development projects can mitigate the impacts of that particular development. So typically, most often, uh, mitigation is accomplished on the development site or somewhere within the same watershed.
But these are outside the development area?
Right.
So why, why are we doing it farther away as opposed to closer to the urban growth area?
It's, it's dependent upon availability of landowners willing to accept these funds is ultimately kind of where the location happens. And I would say that in a lot of cases, you know, nine times out of ten with soil conservation's easements. While they may not necessarily always be immediately adjacent to the project site or not always within the same watershed. They have a high focus on protecting water quality within the Antietam and Kona Kajig watersheds. So, there, there is water quality benefits particularly being accrued as a result of these easements, even if they aren't necessarily immediately adjacent to where the project is occurring.
No, I understand, I'm just wondering why farther away and why not closer for an easement to protect watershed closer to? Bakerstown.
I can somewhat enter that, so part, part of the reason is we look at these easements for, for lack of better words, we're bang for your buck. So in this particular instance, protecting these water bodies in the Potomac's immediate watershed gives us more environmental benefit than it would if we were looking or pursuing an easement closer to, say, the warehouse there at Oak Ridge Drive.
Okay, I, I understand that and I will end with this observation. Definition of bang for the buck depends upon, you know, you could have more bang for your buck in my view. Maybe not in total acreage, but in limiting growth that impacts watershed. By doing it closer to the areas that are threatened by development, that's, that's all, so.
And to answer your question, Commissioner Harvey, um, it's a wolf oak.
A oak, okay.
And that's on the literature that you guys have in front of you in packets.
Is it a fast growing oak?
I don't know of any oak that's fast growing, that's why it's so, um, I guess precious in the Department of Natural Resources inventory.
Okay, we can get those from our local nursery, right?
I've never seen one, quite honestly.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I second.
We already second.
We have a motion to second.
You're discussing on the second.
I never got a chance to say it, because the president didn't give me an option.
We're happy to entertain questions.
Any other questions, comments? Ready to vote, all in favor by saying aye? Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is application for zoning map amendment, RZ twenty-three dash zero zero five. Travis, you're back up.
All right, Travis Allen again, Senior Planner with Planning and Zoning. So here in this case, uh, we have a, a bit more of a straightforward rezoning, uh, map amendment. We have a request to, uh, fully terminate an existing rural business overlay at eighty-five twenty-four Barney Church Road, uh, in Boonsborough. Um, so fully terminating it over nine point three nine acres at that, uh, location. Circumstances surrounding this request are that, uh, this parcel was subdivided from the Sanmar Children's Home in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so it was formerly a part of those properties subdivided off and now sold off to an individual owner. Um, the owner is looking to add an addition to that property to help house their parents. And under the existing zoning, um, residential uses are severely limited within a rural business, uh, zoning district. So by fully terminating, um, that zoning district, it would allow them to pursue that addition as well as, um, use the land. According to the base zoning of agricultural rural.
So basically, that's a down zoning.
Right.
And, and we don't have to do anything other than vote on a down zoning, there's no hearings or nothing, that's up zoning, yeah.
It's a, it's a straightforward agenda item for the commissioners to decide upon and, uh, they have met the, the requirements of the zoning ordinance which are largely just submitting a written request to us. That letter is a part of the, the file and the agenda materials and then it is for the, the commissioners to decide upon. Well Travis, I'm always for down zoning, so I.
You've made very happy today, Travis.
Was there?
I'm good, I motioned to approve it.
I second.
Okay, just for the record, was there a fee for that request? Was there a fee attached to the request for the rezoning?
Um, we may have, uh, had a, a processing fee, I can't, can't recall for this one. The, the process of, of us shepherding these through the regulatory process is so simple, I'm not even sure if we actually did charge the property owner fees or not, but.
Just curious, motion is second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, thank you, thanks for your work on that.
Travis, good, thanks, good to see you in here.
Okay, next item is, uh, utility fiber works, Scott Hobbs.
Good morning, Scott Hobbs, Director of Engineering. I was here on August eighth to provide an update about the ongoing utility work throughout the county. Here to report, um, there was a request made about additional inspection and upon review, um, talking with staff and, uh, some of our different agencies. Um, we have some staff available that are currently working on other county projects to assist as needed. Our capital improvement plan inspectors, uh, currently working on our road reviews around the area. And we can utilize them, uh, to provide additional inspection coverage as needed. I provided a map as the attachment, there's approximately a hundred miles of work going on right now, that's currently permitted work areas uh, throughout the county for fiber installation, so we have the areas shown, we have inspectors in the area. We also evaluated, um, increasing utility permits or conditions of the permit to address this. Uh, I've spoken to the supervisors of the different utility companies, construction inspectors and, um, there's been some, um, turnover involved with some of the supervisors and they've corrected that in the last couple of weeks. So we have a commitment from them to, uh, provide a different, additional oversight. Um, so with that, uh, if there's any questions, just a consensus to move forward with that approach.
Supervisors were with the cable contractor.
Yes.
Now you, you, you happy with all that, are you pretty comfortable? Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I don't see any of this coming out to my area, darn.
Yeah, move in toward me.
Yeah, okay, I'm good.
I got plenty of trenches in my front yard.
The last two or three weeks, I don't think there's been as many questions, concerns or complaints.
Yes. Yeah, we haven't heard as many, there's been, again, the supervisors, when the turnover, they've done a, a great job responding to the property owners and our inspectors. Are also involved in, or keep, keep the property owners updates and, and our staff involved with it.
Good.
Thank you Scott.
Thank you. Next item, budget adjustment.
Good morning, Kristen Grossnippel, Court Administrator from Circuit Court. I'm here this morning to ask for approval to move twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars from the Circuit Court's computer software equipment account to the general fund CIP account for fiscal year twenty-three. The Circuit Court budgeted for an upgrade and replacement to the docket board system under the Circuit Court's computer and software equipment line for the, of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Project went through the procurement process and was awarded to NFACS with the purchase order issued on June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Due to the timing of delivery and of supplies and schedules of the vendor and the court, installation reached full completion last week on August sixteenth. For the recommendation from the Department of Budget and Finance, um, a fiscal year twenty-three budget adjustment's been generated to move to twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars from the computer software equipment line to the general fund CIP for this expenditure. So we're asking for approval, um, for the budget adjustment as presented.
My, I motioned to approve the budget adjustment.
Second. Motion is second to approve as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign, four oh.
Thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're up, Rachel's up.
Uh, next item is community organizational funding. Available funding and service priority area allocations, good morning.
Good morning, Rachel Souders, Senior Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. The Community Organization Funding Committee is preparing for the fiscal year twenty-five application and review process. As was agreed upon when the program was created, the Board of County Commissioners shall annually determine and approve the service priority areas, areas eligible to receive funding consideration. The Board shall also set or approve the total available funding that should be dedicated to each established service priority area. Historically, the Board has funded six areas, which are arts and culture, domestic violence, families and children, recreation, seniors and other. These service priority areas have encompassed and included all applications received and have not excluded an organization from submitting an application. For the purposes of the committee's fiscal year twenty-five consideration, um, Washington County's interim CFO has indicated one million dollars is available for distribution. This is the same amount as was approved last year for FY twenty-four, this, or last application period twenty-four. Um, the total is subject to adjustment as the budget is discussed. It is the recommendation of the county's interim CFO and the Office of Grant Management that the amount of funding made available for each respective service priority be set as follows. For arts and culture, one hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Domestic violence, three hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. Families and children, four hundred twelve thousand, three oh five. Recreation, twenty-eight thousand, three fifty. Seniors, one hundred thirteen thousand, six ten. And other, ten thousand, two hundred ninety dollars. As previously agreed by the Board, the COF Committee does have the latitude to move twenty percent of the approved amounts from one service priority to another. But every year, the amount of funding available for each area will return to the previously approved amount. On August thirty-first and twenty-one, the Board voted to allow the inclusion of capital expenses as eligible costs funded through the community organization funding. This inclusion has not had an adverse impact upon the program and has provided increased flexibility for applicants. Therefore, it's recommended that we continue to allow both capital and operating expenses. Historically, the COF Grant Program has provided funding for an average of thirty nonprofit organizations each year. The submitted applications are reviewed and scored by the committee based upon the following scoring criteria. Statement of need, a maximum of twenty points. Past performance, five points. Organizational capacity and staffing plan, twenty points. Program plan, thirty-five points. Collaborations, partnerships and coordination of services, ten points. And budgets spreadsheet and narrative, ten points.
I, uh, you know, this thing, I, I haven't never heard complaints about how this has been restructured. I've never heard complaints on that and, and so I would have to think it's working the way it's, you know, unless somebody has heard a lot of complaints. I think I would not fix it if it wasn't broken. I, I, I think I'd be fine with it, so I'm, I'd, I'd be good with it.
Is that, is that a motion?
Well.
Well, I have just a question, Rachel. So, we have a million dollars from, where does that money derive from?
It, it's driven from.
It's driven from general fund.
General fund.
General fund revenues.
And so we've consistently provided one million or less or more?
No, this year, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say, it, it increased, um, last year to one million dollars, prior to that, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand.
At one time, it was like one point six million?
Yeah, I think it was.
Didn't we include the Commission on Aging as part of line item and then that money got transferred to our budget?
That was one of my questions, so we have seniors here, since we have Commission on Aging, that is a line item, is this seniors money for other groups like elder group? And we're not, this won't be going to the Commission on Aging?
The Commission on Aging is not, um, precluded from applying if they have a new project that they are trying to fund. But they're not supposed to use this for their ordinary operating expenses.
Is that a motion, or is that just a consensus?
It's called for a motion, isn't it?
Yeah, move to approve the community organization funding, service priority areas, and their respective available funding amounts as presented.
Second. Motion to second, ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Motion to go into closed session.
You have a second?
Jeff's second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Three-minute recess.
Hold on.
Okay, we're back in open session.
Um, at this time, I'd like to recommend the promotion of George Schweitzer to the position of Golf Course Superintendent effective August 19th, 2023, at a grade Step 15/15 with an annual salary of $96,054 for this exempt position.
Motion to approve the appointment of George Schweitzer.
Motion to second, all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you.
At this time, I'd also like to recommend the approval of Rachel Souders as interim Director of the Office of Grants Management effective August 19th, 2023, at a grade 16/1 with an annual salary of $73,382 for this exempt position.
Motion to approve Rachel Souders.
Second. Motion to second on the floor, all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Motion to go into closed session.
You have a second?
Jeff's second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Three-minute recess.
Hold on.
At this time, I'd like to recommend the promotion of George Schweitzer to the position of Golf Course Superintendent effective August 19th, 2023, at a grade Step 15/15 with an annual salary of $96,054 for this exempt position.
Motion to approve the appointment of George Schweitzer.
Motion to second, all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, 4-0. Thank you.
At this time, I'd also like to recommend the approval of Rachel Souders as interim Director of the Office of Grants Management effective August 19th, 2023, at a grade 16/1 with an annual salary of $73,382 for this exempt position.
Motion to approve Rachel Souders.
Second. Motion to second on the floor, all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
That's everything that I have.
Okay, you have, you're gonna make the question. Okay, Derek's gonna make it.
Well, I have two.
No, go ahead. You go first.
The first is, um, I make the recommendation for you to make a provision to reappoint Mayor William Green to serve a third to-year term from May 1st, 2022 through April 30th of 2024 as Washington County Municipalities Representative on the Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Motion to approve Mayor Green.
Okay, motion to second to approve Mayor Green, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign, 4-0.
And request a motion to accept the appointment of, I'm sorry, Catherine Boyd Mansell to fulfill the term of Deborah A. Phillips on the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. The term will end in August 31st of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion to second to approve as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign, thank you, 4-0.
Derek.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the nomination of Tom Thorson to the Commission on Aging Advisory Council to fulfill a full new term.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign, thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Motion, uh, convene, pose, motion, pose. Anything in?
I think we got it all.
No comments? Any other?
Somebody second that motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
Yeah. Close. Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you.